There are conditions of entry to our meetings. All members of the community attending the council meeting are asked to behave in a courteous and respectful manner before, during and after the meeting. And respectively, this includes no placards, posters or materials other than personal effects. In accordance with Local Law 1, the Chair may order and cause the removal of any person, including a councillor, who disrupts any meeting or fails to comply with the direction. Livestreaming, councillors currently livestream council meetings and speakers here tonight will be included in the audio recording. That is, you won't be on the video feed but your voice will be heard. If you have, if you do have any concerns with this, please speak to a council officer. They are sitting along the back wall behind you there. Recording of council meetings, in accordance with Local Law 1, a person must not operate audiotape or other recording equipment at any council meeting without first obtaining the consent of the council or the Chair, as the case may be. Such consent may at any time during the course of such a meeting be revoked by the council or the Chair. Now move on now to apologies. So I have an apology from Councillor White, who can't make it tonight. Are there any other apologies? I don't think there are. Declarations of interest, councillors. I'll start with you first, Councillor Clancy.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I have already declared to the CEO that I have a, an interest at the budget item 10.1 this evening.
Thank you. Councillor Howe, I presume you're next?
Yes. I also have an indirect conflict with 10.1, close association.
Thank you. And Councillor McFarlane?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I have a direct interest in budget item 10.1.
10.1. Having got the budget out of the way, councillors, as I was about to say, any other councillor have a conflict? Yes.
The same 10.1, Member Norrie Russell.
Procedure, this raises a procedural issue, councillor. That could take council into a situation of no quorum. I will seek the advice of the officers while I work through that one. I'm sorry, Members of the Gallery, we could actually, if these four councillors were to leave the chamber while we're, while we're making a decision, the council wouldn't have a quorum. So we'll have to split the, split the motion. Now, can I ask the officers, the governor's team over there? Yeah, question, certainly.
Sorry, Mr Mayor, is there not provision in the Act for us to be able to vote to keep them in the room?
No. I believe so.
Yeah, I think you need, I think you need an esterial approval on that one.
Check that one.
Um, Mr CEO, could you, you will... Can I, can we have a look at the alternate item at 10.1? We now need a part, a part four effectively to include some, some wording around councillor laws, things. That's a great idea. So salaries and wages and capital works project, construction support. So the original, um, the original proposal would include councillor McFarlane and councillor Howe, and then we'd have to come up with, with an alternative. So, Mr CEO, can I ask the officers to craft a proposed Resolution 1A which would take into consideration the conflicts declared by councillor Clancy and councillor War? The man's on to it. Thank you. Right, thank you councillors. I should ask at this point, are there any other conflicts of interest that councillors wish to declare? We will seek advice on your proposal, but I...
No, I'm not, I'm just saying it's one of those last...
Yeah, yeah. And I think we will have to have that one in, in a, in our back pocket on that one. Councillors, we can move on to the adoption of the minutes for the ordinary council meeting of the 6th of May and the special council meeting of the 13th of May. My mind's gone blank on this, councillors, has been practice in the past to do two of them together or one, each individually? No, doing it as one? Move councillor Gibson. Somebody to second, councillor McFarlane. Any opposition? No opposition. Councillor Gibson, do you wish to speak? And I presume you don't, councillor McFarlane? Nobody else wish to speak? If not, I'll call that carried unanimously. Move on to acknowledgements. Councillors may raise any formal acknowledgements that need to be made at this time. Councillor O'Callaghan.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Raise to actually acknowledge the passing a week ago today of Mac Wood. Many within our community will be familiar with Mac, not only due to his recent community-based activities, but as a longstanding principal in a number of our local primary schools. He was also a mentor to many and was very highly regarded, not only in the education sector, but in a number of other areas within our local community. He was a member of Rotary, subsequently Probus and Scouts, where he made a significant contribution. He was recognised with an Order of Australia Medal for his services to education. And locally, we also acknowledged Mac as our Citizen of the Year, as recognition not only to his participation and support of education locally, but also his community activities, including those within our Positive Aging Reference Group and a number of other community activities that were undertaken by council. It would be fair to say that Mac is a significant loss to our local community. It was a wonderful opportunity to be with his family, friends and former colleagues at his memorial, to hear all of the stories of his contribution and the great commitment that he had, not only to us as individuals, but to us as a community. So just wanting to take this moment to acknowledge Mac, to thank Mac and also his family for allowing us to take up so much of his time in terms of community pursuits. And we acknowledge Mac's contribution to our local community and he will be greatly missed. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Any other councillor wish to make an acknowledgement? Councillor Harriman?
Sorry, Mr Mayor, I need to acknowledge a passing as well, that of Eric Jeffrey Neal. Jeff Neal was an absolute stalwart of the local Lions Clubs. Jeff had 35 years as a Lion in Trelgany, which culminated in two very prestigious awards from Lions Clubs International. The highest award that a Lion can receive is a Mervyn Jones Award, and Jeff was awarded that a number of years ago. And in 2017, he was awarded life membership from Lions International. Those who had frequented or been to the Trelgany Farmers Market would be aware of Jeff. He was a driving force behind setting that up and was quite regularly seen there organising not only the market itself, but everyone cooking the Lions barbecue as well. He was a great organiser. Jeff is a former president of Trelgany Lions Club and held the position of treasurer for 15 years at the Lions Club. Jeff as well served as Chair and Treasurer for the Spinal Research Institute, Spinal Injury Research Institute of Australia as their, their fundraiser. And unfortunately, Jeff passed away last Thursday week. And I just wanted to acknowledge the huge amount of community work that Jeff had done and just pay tribute to his service. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Mr Mayor, I just wanted to acknowledge the Trode Valley Camera Club, and I, I think I've mentioned this to councillors already, but last weekend, the weekend of the 24th, 25th and 26th, the Trode Valley Camera Club held the annual convention inter-club exhibition for all of Victoria for the Victorian, uh, Association of Photographic Societies, as it's known as VAPS. And this is held out at Federation University. Now, there's 70 odd clubs across all of Victoria, and 46 of these attended this weekend. It was a four-day weekend, Thursday, Friday and Saturday, Sunday. They put the exhibition up on Thursday, put all the prizes out, and then on Friday they had an opening. And then Saturday and Sunday, they ran workshops and photographic tours. We had 220 people turn up in the Trode Valley and stay in our motels and eat in our restaurants over that weekend. And it was quite a significant convention. And the people I spoke to on the Sunday afternoon said it was the most marvellous place to photograph. I suppose because of our industrial heritage and our ecosystems and our natural beauty, the sun doesn't set anywhere like it does in the valley between the topographical sides of the Boar Boar ranges and the Stresleki ranges. So ver- very, very happy photographers and a wonderful event. So well done to the Trode Valley Camera Club for, for hosting this event. It was an absolute coup to get the, the convention here in Gippsland, and they, they ran a really, really good convention.
Are there any other councillors wish to make an acknowledgements? All right, thank you councillors, we'll move on to public question time. Are there any questions from the public, Mr CEO?
So, three, you said there are. Two questions, probably from Jane Carsley, I'm sorry, Jane's board this night. If she's not, we'll simply put those names in the minutes at our council meeting. Jane's here, so we'll just sit, capitalising on the minutes at our council meeting.
Microphone on, councillor McFarlane, you think that might help? Speakers, I will ask you to come up to the lecturn, you have three minutes to address council, then I'll ask you to wait in case there are questions by councillors. The first person to speak, in fact, all speakers are talking on item 14.3, and the first speaker is Ken Dunn. Ken, would you like to come up?
Good evening, Mayor and councillors. We're going to pose a zoning proposal for 15 Kevin Court in Trelgany. The character of enabled areas purely residential properties, mostly owned occupied housing families and retirees who pride themselves in keeping the area clean, quiet and safe place to live, believe that a rooming house will dramatically change us a negative way by providing cheap accommodation for the people who are often from a transient and marginalised groups, i.e. chronically unemployed, those with mental illness, problems with substance abuse, ex-offenders. These people will have little interest financially, not being homeowners or ratepayers, and may have little interest morally to ensure that the current character and lifestyle enjoyed by our local community is maintained. We wish to protect, as you would understand, the current quiet and safe standard of living we have had for the last 23 and a half years in Kevin Court. We've been able to raise three confident, successful, law-abiding children who spent their formative years living and playing in the court. And these kids now all are local homeowners, contributing both as ratepayers and taxpayers in their own right. We wish to extend these values to our grandchildren, believing that our neighbourhood provides a shared, a safe place to achieve this. And the old adage of taking a village to raise a child is very true, and the main reason for buying a home in the court in the first place. It's baffling to think for a moment that such a purposely built facility as a one earmarked at 15 Kevin Court doesn't contravene the Planning and Environmental Act 1987, that is Section 4, objectives, point 1c, secure a pleasant, efficient and safe working, living and recreational environment for all Victorians and visitors to Victoria. And also point 2d, to ensure that the effects on the environment are considered and provide for explicit consideration of social and economic effects when decisions are made about the use and development of land. Do the needs of the one, the private... Do the needs of the one, the private owner of this facility, running a business at a profit outweigh the needs of the many, us as residents, who will be affected negatively by setting up the business within our neighbourhood? We notice that a similar facility at Moscow Park in Moorall has their payment cheque sent to Larno Proprietary Limited, private bag eight four eight seven, Turack Road, Turack. And we wonder if these citizens, the fine citizens in Turack, would be entertaining a crisis center facility in their neighbourhood? As to our written objections reply from the firm PLC Consulting, obviously employers to to teasically inflate inflict these establishments on the unsuspecting public? No, it is sad, consult go slowly because I'm a little bit angry about it. It is sad that many of our concerns can be pigeonholed into the category of other issues. Statesmen such as strict visiting hours will be implemented, by whom? Professionally managed and maintained, by whom? Locally based property manager regularly conducting inspections, who and how often? Tenants are expected to comprise members of the local Terrelegan community, expected? Yes, I've got one more point, McGrath, and that's it. And tenants will predominantly consist of low-risk individuals. So, there's plenty of wriggle room to house high-risk individuals. Sorry for going over my time, I timed it this afternoon and I was under the three.
Sorry.
You're all right.
Thank you, Ken, just a couple of questions please. Now, when the new owner took it, took over this property, how has it been run? Has it been run as uh with all those issues occurring? Or has it changed since the new owner took over?
It's been relatively quiet, there's an unregistered vehicle parked out front at the moment. Um, but my understanding was that because the box hadn't been ticked as far as having up to twelve people living in the house, that there's only one or two people actually living there, so. Um, at the moment, yeah, as we said, we're down the middle of the court, so probably the best people to ask that particular question will be those that are next door or across the road, yeah.
No worries, thank you.
Any other questions councillors? Thank you, Ken.
No worries.
Our next speaker on the same item councillors is Cole Williams. Cole, are you here? Same rules, three minutes, and if you'd remain there for us to ask your questions again.
Good evening, Mayor and councillors, thanks for your time. Um, my name's Cole, um, my wife and I are the owners of fifteen Kevin Court. Um, prior to purchasing this property, uh, we actually come to council, myself, um, introduced myself, got in touch with the planner and uh explained exactly my intentions was for my next purchase of of um a property in um Latrobe Valley. Um, I asked them to confirm that it was exempt from the from the planning scheme and what sort of laws are to apply by by that. Um, I believe this property prior to purchasing met all those regulations. I actually asked the planner to get in touch with me and sent it in writing that it would be exempt. Based on that, I purchased the property. Um, we went, we then went to, we did all the works for the property, so we applied for applicable permits, did everything as we should. Um, got in touch with a bit of a mentor in with uh the Registered Association of um Rooming. Um, for some advice as to how to set up and the best way going about things and best practice. Um, when it comes time to register the property, uh, it was deemed that the property roof area, which is the property, design of the property has got large varandas, exceeded three hundred square metres, um, to which it all surprised. And then here we are now with a uh a planning permit. So, I had two options, I could have cut all the eaves off the house and uh and just not given anybody opportunity to, I guess, comment on it, or apply for a planning permit, which I've, which I've done. Um, I've seen and read all objections and there does seem to be some misinformation about the kind of people who would be seeking residence in these properties. I I'm aware that there is a bit of rogue operator in 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 the area that um probably does make it a bad name for a lot of people. Um, I own eight other properties in Latrobe Valley, um, none of which have had any issues. Um, they are single uh one-bedroom units, um, again, same market, same target market. Um, my target property is, I'm looking for mid-to-long-term um tenants, I'm not looking for, so, work, sorry, long-term tenants, uh, both incoming and local students, workers, single, single and affordable housing. To uh to house troublesome individuals, it's not only a problem for the people that live in the property, it's also a problem for the managers and myself. Um, that's maintained by having, when you when you rent that room, you rent that room and that room only, so the common areas are free for managers and owners to go and and inspect it, make sure everything's been compliant. Um, uh, during the application process, this was referred to the Victorian Police, um, which I then tried to get in contact with and organise a meeting with them on-site to discuss how I plan on managing that property and how I'm going to do it better. Um, Stephen Stephen Owen had a a family issue, he was unable to make that meeting and we tried to reschedule and it just didn't seem to happen. So, here we are today and we haven't actually had a chance to sit down and have that conversation with Victorian Police and how we can make it better. Is that the bell? Sorry.
Got a few seconds, we'll keep going.
Um, again, I you look, I I did see an opportunity, there's a, you know, I know that the rental market is quite hard. It's a one-point-five percent uh vacancy rate in Latrobe Valley, um, which is why I thought as a, for workers and uh and this sort of housing, I I believe it was it was necessary and as I've seen with my other properties in the area, so, which is why.
Okay, thank you. Cole, councillors, any question, don't go away, Cole. Question councillor Clancy.
Uh, I might ask a similar question to what councillor Gibson just asked, uh, Mr Dunn beforehand, you might be better placed to answer this. So, the type of people that have been in there, this is a retrospective planning permit, so you've you've been operating. What sort of people have you had in there and how will that change if this box is ticked, as Mr Dunn said?
Uh, I've had students in there at this point, um, and I haven't had any problems, so uh, I'm only allowed to have up to three people, uh, without a, without being registered, so that's what I've done. And I've um not broken any laws and I've had no issues, so.
So, I'll, well, I think I heard someone speak from behind you, but so how will that change if you've got three now and you get this? How will that change?
So, it then goes, well, it's a nine-bedroom home. Um, we don't, again, the reason it's nine-bedroom isn't because I could fill up and just capitalise on it, it's we generally run between like eighty to eighty-five percent, so at any point, any time, there might be two to three rooms that are empty. Um, if it was a four-bedroom property, it doesn't stack up, it's that simple. Um, which is why it's the size it is and, but the main thing is, I guess it could have been coming down this planning application phase, it could have been more bedrooms, um, instead of deciding to keep them larger, which gives um the residents like a a small living space within their own room, um, and be able to have table and amenities, so.
Thank you, Cole. Uh, a couple of questions please, who is going to supervise the people staying there?
Supervise people staying there? There'll be a property manager, uh, RA Holdings, which is a, they operate other rooming houses in the area.
Now, you've heard um one of the the people and their um concerns. I understand about the rogue operator, how could you um allay their fears?
Um, I think with uh things, systems that we have in place, so um by having key codes to the entry doors and altered to each door means that returned tenants can't come back. Um, like any uh like any house or dwelling, um, there's an application process, so like any, if if I was renting that house as standard rental, there's no guarantee that that real estate agent is going to pick the perfect tenant. Um, what you find with the laws around rooming is that there's a, there's a really short period, um, as in two weeks, that you can have that person notified and out the door. And um and you've got to apply abide by those house rules. And if those house rules aren't met, the, it's it's an eviction and that's as simple as that. So, by monitoring that, like I said, you've got full access to the property at all times as a as a manager. And um and that's how it's maintained.
So, is there a manager on-site at all times?
Not at all times, no.
Okay, so if there's a problem?
There's a person on-call at all times, that can that can be contacted, there's um notice boards in the property. Um, police will be given a code if there if it needs be. Um, I'm more than happy to work with the police if it means that we've got, I'll I'll contact them and say, do we know this person? Is this person of interest? Um, but that's, like I said, with any application, we'd take it and treat it as as you would with a normal dwelling.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Any other councillor wish to ask questions? If not, thank you, Cole.
Thank you.
Councillors, our next speaker is Mark Baker and Mark is listed as the Director of the Registered Accommodation Association of Victoria.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and councillors, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, as I was introduced, I'm the Director of the Registered Accommodation Association of Victoria, which is the peak industry body for rooming houses. Uh, RAV members total around one-third of licensed operators in Victoria and the primary purpose of RAV is to promote and encourage best practice in the rooming house sector. Um, RAV receive funding to run a best practice programme from Consumer Affairs Victoria, provide information sessions to members and to environmental health officers of local councils. Um, RAV committee members and uh and board members, such as myself, are not paid. We're doing this voluntarily, um, promote, because we see promoting best practice as vital to our industry. RAV regularly consults the state government departments, such as Consumer Affairs Victoria, on changes to the Residential Tenancies Act and currently on the regulations that are being written in anticipation of it being introduced. Um, also with Department of Health and Human Services on minimum standards that were introduced to rooming houses in two thousand and twelve and um all and on the current uh review of the Public Health and Wellbeing Regulations. Also been involved in consultation with the Department of Environment, Land, Water and Planning on planning amendments. Now, I don't dispute there's some rogue operators and this may be where the negative perception of rooming houses comes from. But members of RAV are there because they take their legal responsibilities under the multitude of legislation applicable to rooming houses seriously and seek to operate under a best best practice model while keeping up to date with all legislative and regulatory requirements. So, Cole, as you mentioned, is a member of RAV, is regularly consulted with us to ensure he gets things right in setting up this property. Um, you've heard him speak of the process, but he's been through, including confirming with the council that a planning planning permit was not required prior to commencing any work at the property. Based on that advice, the property now has a Class One B occupancy permit, which is what's required under the Building Code for that use. So, as far as the building goes, it's safe and compliant for its intended use. So, clearly his intention is to do the right thing. So, no issue was raised until there was, um, the property was, you know, work was completed, registration was applied for with the council and at this time they raised concern over the floor area exceeding three hundred square metres. So, if we have a look at that issue, in the planning scheme in clause fifty-two, twenty-three, it states the purpose is to facilitate the establishment of domestic-scale rooming houses. Now, some of the key points in there, I'll get the right one, are that there's no more than nine bedrooms, no more than twelve persons to be accommodated and the total floor area not exceeding three hundred square metres. As I've already mentioned, um, we did consult with the Department of Environment, Land, Water and Planning on this amendment and the intention was to align with the National Construction Code. So, the twelve occupants, three hundred square metres, straight from Class One B in the Building Code. So, as it already has a Class One B occupancy permit, that means maximum number of people's twelve and the maximum floor area is three hundred square metres. So, the issue really is around the gross, around the gross floor area defined in the planning scheme. Uh, not long at all. So, gross floor area defined in the planning scheme is anything covered by a roof, whereas the Building Code is anything measured by the enclosing walls. Uh, we've confirmed with Delp there intention was to align the, um, where are we? So, the the, uh, is it measured by the enclosing walls?
Would you like to summarise now?
Yep, yeah, okay. So,
Quickly.
the simple thing, as Cole mentioned, would could be to reduce roof area or anything covered by a roof. That would reduce amenity for occupants, you know, not having any varandas and anything like that. So, yeah, I'm sort of thinking we really shouldn't be here, as far as I can see, it meets the requirements of the clause, but there's been a misinterpretation of the word gross as having the same meaning as total.
Okay, Mark, would you like to stay there? We'll see if there are any questions for you. Councillors, councillor Gibson.
Thank you, Mark.
No worries.
Question is, um, I hear what you're saying about Cole and your association. If there, and you've heard about the rogue operator?
Yep.
If that actually happened at this property, what would happen?
If what happened, if?
If they were a rogue operator like others.
Um, well, I mean, there's provisions under the Health and Wellbeing Act, um, and, yeah, for the council to take action. Um, under the Building Code, if there's any building issues being breached. The Residential Tenancies Act does give the operator reasonable powers, as Cole mentioned, to vacate people on shorter notice than under a standard residential tenancy. Um, so, so in my experience, I've actually found from my own properties, I've had more issues with standard tenancies when I've had problem people than I have with a rooming house. Can be dealt with a lot faster under the Residential Tenancies Act.
All right, if I'm hearing you right, so a person who is signing up and um part of your association actually wants it completely different to what we've heard about in the past, is that what you're saying?
I'd say that's probably generally the, generally the way it is. I wouldn't imagine that people who are there intending to go and exploit things would want to join an association like ours. Um, yeah, our purpose is to promote best practice and, you know, consult with the government on legislation, regulatory changes and make sure things are done well.
Right, thank you.
No worries.
Mr Dunn, I am the only person entitled to make question, comments at this meeting. If you persist, I'll have to ask you to leave, okay? Councillors, any questions? Councillor Law.
Yeah, just a point of clarification, um, Mark or Cole, um, with the um, discussions held with council, was there any written back to say that the three hundred square metres was acceptable or not?
Uh, the three hundred square metres only became an issue with the amendment of the planning scheme that came on the twenty-sixth of October. So, the initial communication, there was in writing or in the form of an email, that Cole, that I've seen that Cole had received that confirmed that a permit wasn't required and no issue was raised until the registration application. And as I was saying too, I, um, the three hundred square metres was intended to align with the Building Code, which it does. Um, gross floor area is a defined term in the planning scheme, the clause actually says total floor area, not gross floor area, so I think the whole thing's a misinterpretation of the, of a wording of the clause.
Fine, thank you.
No worries.
Thank you councillor Law. Any other councillor wish to ask a question? If not, thank you very much, Mark.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, again on the same issue, is Annette Rado Savlivic. I'll have a go at it, how close did I get?
Pretty close.
Okay. Annette, the same rules, three minutes and then stay there for questions, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr Mayor and councillors. I'd like to talk to you um the same thing. I wanted to address the planning curtains, but unfortunately I contacted Watershed on the first of May and after several phone conversations and emails, disappointingly, they told me today there's a conflict of interest, so I couldn't get um anything to address that. But I do question the car's car parking space, that if there are nine people there, we are not close to public transport out there, we're not close to the railway station. If these are uni students, there's no regular uni bus to go out to um Fed- Federation Uni, so they they would all require a vehicle. If you've got nine cars out on the streets in that area, there's already one out there with no number plates. I question how that impacts on our car parking in our area. The living space of the house is quite small, I've seen the plans, I don't know how nine to twelve people who um cohabit, that don't necessarily get along or know each other, share such a small space and a small yard. Um, I believe if um the gentleman was um entirely, his intentions were good, he would have consulted with the neighbours prior to having to have a planning permit and having to come here and there was none of that consultation. We have a really good culture in our neighbourhood. I live around the corner and I live next door to my parents, I was raised there. They've lived there for over fifty years and I do think this will impact on the, the um property values, the welfare and wellbeing. They're now scared to live in their house and worried about who will be over their back fence, their fences are joined. I don't want my parents in their elderly years to have to feel that way. Um, there's kinders and schools close by, there's an elderly home close by. Um, the, the walls of the property have been reinforced with steel, which is not conducive of well-behaved tenants being in that property, you wouldn't do that if you thought you were going to get well-behaved tenants. And I think prior history of the low socio-economic people within the Gips, the the Latrobe Valley that are going to go into the, this home, um, they don't have a good track record of good behaviour and I, I, you know, don't want that in our neighbourhood. And if we're looking at at young students, we've all raised young adults, we all know that, you know, their behaviour can be um quite ad hoc and if they're living out of home, there's no one checking on them, there's no one living in there supervising them on a day-to-day basis. I question how, um, you know, I question how that works. The rooms are quite small, the bedrooms, they've converted the shed to two bedrooms, they've converted the study to a bedroom and other rooms upstairs to a bedroom. I just think that it doesn't fit within our neighbourhood, within our culture and already we're seeing that with a car with no number plates. There've been a few, the police were called just two weeks ago to an incident there. I can't tie it back to that house, but I have to question, it hasn't happened before and why is it happening now? You know, that's all.
Hello, Annette.
Hi.
The permits for 12 people being in the boarding house, is there any level, you know, six or five or eight that you'd find acceptable? Or is it just not at all, off the table completely?
Look, I wouldn't like to see it as a rooming house. I don't know why they couldn't have rented it to a young family and left it as a five-bedroom normal house. You know, the gentleman has already advised that he's got lots of units, that he rents out these type of tenants. I don't know why he couldn't have sought the same kind of property for this and, you know, kind of left our neighbourhood the way it was or used that house for families.
Can I just remind the gallery, we would appreciate if you switch your phones to silent or off. Okay, our next speaker is Joy Gray, again on the same item we've just been listening to. Joy, are you there? Three minutes and then please stay there so we can ask you questions.
Trust me, I won't be here three minutes. And it's covered most of my points on the rooming house at 15 Kevin Court. I live in Far and Close, which is approximately two blocks away, but we've noticed already that there are a number of characters looming within the area or lurking within the area around evening and after dark, which we've not had before. Yeah, so we just see it as a huge problem for a rooming house to be in that area when we're mostly all retirees and elderly people, myself being slightly disabled physically. And yeah, we are all concerned about the safety of the elder people in the area. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Joy. Just hang on. Councillors, any questions for Joy? Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, councillors, we move on to effectively the business of the day.
Mr Mayor, if I may?
You certainly can.
Further to my question before, I think our preferred method of consideration would be that split. The change to the act would require a quorum call of the council to be instigated by either the minister or the chief executive officer and I don't believe that is ideal given the circumstances and the intent of the act. So I think we're on safer ground splitting it in two, but thank you for considering it.
Thank you, councillor O'Callaghan, you've convinced me. Right, first item for consideration is item 9.1, antisocial behaviour in Newborough. The agenda item is not yet up, it is now and therefore should be behind me. Councillor Gibson, this is yours, so mark you as moving.
Yes, please.
Do I have a second? Councillor Law to second? Do I have any opposition, councillors? No opposition? Councillor Gibson, do you wish to speak?
Sort of, yes.
I assumed you would.
No worries. Thank you, Mr Mayor. It is an unfortunate occurrence that we have to actually bring this to council. Since this has been brought to council, we do have a meeting set up with the Department of Health and Human Services, which is a step forward now. So I won't say much on the issue now, but it is a huge problem there and if the gallery with some of their issues think they've got it bad, it's a walk in the park compared to what's going down here. Hopefully this will be sorted out with this meeting. If not, you'll hear, you'll have another notice motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gibson. Councillor Law. Okay. Any other councillor wish to speak? No other councillor wishing to speak? Councillor Gibson, do you wish to close? Okay. As we've had speakers, councillors, it has to go to the vote. Those in favour? Councillor McFarlane? Councillor Gibson? Councillor Law? Councillor Howe? Councillor Harryman? Councillor O'Callaghan? Councillor Glancy and myself carried unanimously. We'll move on, councillors, to item 10.1. For the benefit of the gallery, you have heard a number of councillors declare that they have a conflict in relation to the budget. This is a very common occurrence. They're just members of the community and most of them have a child playing netball with a club, those kind of things. And if that club is mentioned in the budget, they have a conflict, using that as an example. Now, to allow all councillors to vote on the substantial part of the budget, we are hiving off two small sections of the budget where councillors have a conflict. We allow the vote to take place and then come back for the main vote. So in this case, we are moving alternate, the alternate motion one, which has two items in it, in relation to item 10.1. So proposed resolution two, you can wipe that off for the moment because we are dealing with resolution one only. And councillors Howe and McFarlane have declared a conflict in relation to this proposed item. I'll wait till the resolution two is wiped off. So that is the motion we are considering, councillors. Two councillors have left the room because they have conflicts in relation to these two single items. Do I have a mover?
So moved.
Okay. 10.1. Second?
Have you to second, Mr Mayor?
Thank you. Do I have any opposition? Any councillor wish to speak? On that basis, I'll call it carried unanimously. And if we could have both councillors back in the chamber, please, and we'll move on to, move on to part two of the similar motion. Okay, we have two councillors out of the chamber on the basis they have a conflict around these two very similar items. Now, I'm waiting on the typing of the resolution. So if somebody would like to sing or dance, tap dance for a moment? Thank you, councillor O'Callaghan. If the gallery is wondering why we're delayed in typing these up, we didn't realise we had this conflict until councillor Law declared it at the start of the meeting, so this is being done on the run. I suspect that's the reason. Yes. I'll go with the kinks. Right, I take it, I find it difficult seeing that far. Okay, fair enough. Well, we won't jog their memory that they're on the wrong screen. And if members of the gallery were wondering what that was about, if a councillor leaves the chamber having cited a conflict of interest, they must be out of sight of the chamber. They can't watch what's happening. Mr CEO, are you comfortable with? Okay. Councillors, on item 10.1, this is the second motion of the subset around conflicts of interest. It appears behind me and on the screen above there, the gallery can see the motion. Do I have a mover? Councillor Gibson, are you moving or falling down? Thank you. A second? Councillor Howe? Do I have any opposition? Keep your hands still. Okay, no opposition, I'll declare that carried unanimously. Could we have the two councillors back in, please, Matt? I'll talk to her tomorrow, too. A cup of tea for everybody, I take it? Yeah, okay. Councillors, having resolved the issues of conflict of interest by having very small subsets off the budget, we now come to the 2019-20 council budget. This is the major decision taken by council each year, the most important decision. And I should remind councillors that taken right through, there's $225 million in this budget, so a very important item. Councillors, do I have a mover for item 10.1, proposed resolution two, it appears? Three, sorry, my apologies, this gets too complicated. Proposed resolution three, which is the adoption of the budget. You moved, okay, thank you. Moved, councillor McFarlane? Do I have somebody to second? Councillor Gibson to second? Any opposition? No opposition? Councillor McFarlane?
Well, just briefly, Mr Mayor, the budget process has been a long and exhaustive one, which now has culminated in this motion tonight. As the community would be aware and the budget has been out for community comment, that it provides for the continued delivery of services at their current levels and this year incorporates a fairly massive capital works programme of $117 million. Mr Mayor, there was a number of submissions made through the budget process, which the report has identified and acknowledged and a couple of those, Mr Mayor, one was in relation to Caravan Dump Point in Terrelegan and the assessment of that has indicated the council is currently looking at that issue over the whole municipality, so that will be something that will come forward in the immediate future. There was an interesting concept to construct a scale model solar system in Moi, which certainly had a lot of good ideas in it. And again, at the point of the time in the budget when we considered that, we did believe that the proposal needs a little bit more work done on it, detailed cost estimates and an understanding of community support. So that's put it into the pipeline for something to be again considered in the future. And I think the only other one that was not already accommodated within the process was that to do with the temporary change facilities for the netball club at Terrelegan and the council has requested our officers get some further information as to how we might be able to accommodate those facilities again in the near future. So without sort of going back into the budget, we acknowledged and appreciated the inputs from the community that come in through that process and assure them that their issues are in the pipeline and will be considered at some stage in the future. I commend the budget to the council. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I take note of all the work that the officers and ourselves have done to bring this budget in. With rate capping, it is not as easy as it may have once been, but I believe we've come to a point that, yes, services will be kept, but also rates are at a minimal amount. Now, in relation to one of the items that my fellow councillor spoke about, yes, there is more work being done on the costing and the actual project for it to be considered. That's the Moi one. I do, I strongly like how the dump spots right across the municipality is going to be considered because that is actually going to bring more money into our economy. There is an untapped market that other councils have jumped on board with and we need to get on the boat. So that will actually bring more economy into our CBDs and that will help greatly. So commend the budget to my fellow councillors and thank everybody for the work they've done.
Sorry, Mr Mayor, I'll just fill in because I know councillor White quite often makes this statement. I'd just like to point out that on the budget, Mr Mayor, to our ratepayers, there are two charges on there, the EPA landfill levy charge and the fire services charge that are collected by this council that are not council charges, they're actually a state government charge. As a council, we are forced to collect those, we have no option and we do so at no charge to the state government. This is a burden of collecting of state taxes that is put back onto our ratepayers. It is one we would not wish to collect, it is one we don't want to collect. Councils across Victoria have raised this again and again and have got no joy. So just to make ratepayers aware, those two charges are not levied by council, do not go into council coffers and actually cost the ratepayers money to collect. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
No other councillor wish to speak? Do you wish to close, councillor McFarlane? I should have asked councillor Gibson. Oh, no, it's all fixed. I'm out of step here, don't worry about it. On that basis, having been speakers, we'll put it to the vote. Those in favour? Councillor McFarlane, obviously, councillor Gibson, councillor Law, councillor Howe, councillor Harryman, councillor O'Callaghan, councillor Glancy and myself. The 1920 budget is passed. Thank you, councillors. We'll now move on to item 10.2, collapsible chevron marker signs, an application for funding and sample installation. The mover is?
Move, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Howe? Seconded, councillor Harryman.
Have you to second, Mr Mayor?
Do we have any opposition, councillors? No opposition? Do you wish to speak, councillor Howe?
I'll just speak briefly on it, Mr Mayor. This was brought forward by myself through the Gippsland Motorcycle Advisory Committee, which I'm a member of, which is a subcommittee of the roadside Gippsland Community Road Safety Committee. The collapsible cams, which aren't approved in Australia at the moment, but we are allowed to install a sample installation with approval from regional roads. The motion proposes that we install such a sample on the Hunter Hills Road. The cost for installation could be as high as $40,000, so we have applied for a grant to cover this cost. This motion comes at a time when fatalities in Victoria are up nearly 50% and motorcycles make up 25 of them, which is an increase of nine from 2018. So if we can proceed with this installation, it will be at little or no cost to council. We can then monitor the success in reducing the trauma to motorcyclists and that will enable the advisory team to advocate their installation in Gippsland Way.
Thank you, councillor Howe. Councillor Harryman?
Just quickly, Mr Mayor, just to fill ratepayers in that may not be aware what the chevrons are, they're the on a corner, they're the yellow poles that stand up that have the black arrow on them. The problem that faces motorcyclists is if you come off and hit one, they do not bend. The collapsible chevrons-
The collapsible chevrons have the advantage that if a motorcyclist comes off and hits one, then they just fold down. So it makes it a lot, lot safer, as councillor Howe has said.
Thank you, councillor Harriman. Does any other councillor wish to speak? If not, I'll ask you to close, councillor Howe?
No.
No? Right, well, having had speakers, councillor, we'll have to put it to the vote. Those in favour? Councillor McFarlane, councillor Gibson, councillor Law, councillor Howe, councillor Harriman, councillor O'Callaghan, councillor Clancy and myself, carried unanimously. Move on, councillors, to item 14.1, Latrobe Creative, I noted you councillor O'Callaghan. Latrobe Creative Precinct, Gippsland FM Proposal to Co-Locate at the precinct. You have a recommendation in your, page 8, 187 of your agenda, but I believe councillor O'Callaghan, you are moving an alternate...
Moving an alternate, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Could you please check that the alternate motion wording is as appears on the screen? Because I've got two different copies.
That is correct.
That is correct, okay. So councillor O'Callaghan is moving the alternate recommendation. Do I have a seconder for that motion? Councillor Howe? Do I have any opposition, councillors? No opposition? Councillor O'Callaghan.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, just to speak briefly to the alternate and the reasons for it. The outline of the report gives the context to why we're considering this matter, but basically Gippsland FM have proposed a relocation from their current premise in Moorwall to the Latrobe Creative Precinct. As a council, with the development of these new facilities, as well as our ongoing consideration of use of our current facilities, we need to take into account the best use, availability and access in terms of all of our facilities, in bringing to our attention the opportunity for this potential co-location and partnership and some of the benefits in relation to the creative industries training centre that will be effectively adjacent to the Latrobe Creative Precinct once built, so as part of that precinct. We are prepared to consider that proposal, but we also have an obligation to ensure that any process we run is open and transparent and make available a public process so that people are able to submit their considerations and their proposals, so that when we do reach a point of consideration, we've done so from a fully informed perspective that is broadly and appropriately governance tested. So the nature of the change was to not inadvertently preempt the outcome of a potential decision of council, but to still acknowledge the consideration of Gippsland FM's proposal and to highlight that there will be a broader process for consideration that will be open and transparent for council to consider. Hope that makes some sense. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Howe?
Happy to support councillor O'Callaghan's motion. What he's doing is looking at how we can best utilise that space. It will hopefully provide a level of training opportunities in the media, including formal certification level of courses. It just gives a great opportunity for our youth and for others in our community who wish to have a career in the media and in radio. So I'm very happy to support.
Thank you, councillor Howe. Any other councillor wish to speak? No? On that basis, councillor O'Callaghan, I'll ask you to close.
No, thank you, Mr Mayor, covered it.
Okay. Having had speakers, councillors, we will put it to the vote. Those in favour? Councillor McFarlane, councillor Gibson, councillor Law, councillor Howe, councillor Harriman, councillor O'Callaghan, councillor Clancy and myself, carried unanimously. We'll move on, councillors, to item 14.2. I can't speak that quick. Latrobe City Retail Strategy commences page 205 of your agenda, and it has been moved by councillor McFarlane. Did we have a seconder? Councillor Law. Do we have any opposition, councillors? No opposition. Councillor McFarlane.
Just briefly, Mr Mayor, this strategy has been put together for the council by a group of consultants, which aims to positively guide our retail planning and development over the next 15 years. The fact that it's now a draft strategy, if we go through the process, will enable us the opportunity to consult broadly with the community and consider any issues that our community find within this strategy, so that prior to any adoption, that we've had that discussion and it's appropriate method for us to follow. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McFarlane. Councillor Law.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, purposely, this document is just clearly an indication of where our best practice would be for our retail community, and as councillor, as McFarlane has just stated, is this is community consultation, it's got to take place at many levels to get the final outcome of this process. So basically, we're just starting the ball rolling now. We've been given some guidance and direction, and we will draft this into a final document over the next 12 months. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Law. Would any other councillor wish to speak? No? On that basis, councillor McFarlane, would you like to close?
Okay.
Okay. Having had speakers, councillors, we'll put it to the vote. Those in favour? Councillor McFarlane, councillor Gibson, councillor Law, councillor Howe, councillor Harriman, councillor O'Callaghan, councillor Clancy and myself, carried unanimously. Move to, excuse me, item 14.3, Use of Land for a Rooming House, I recognise you councillor Harriman, and associated development in retrospect in the general residential zone at 15 Kevin Court, Trelgan, commences on page 211 of the agenda with an officer recommendation, but I notice there is also indication of an alternate motion. Councillor Harriman.
Moving alternate, Mr Mayor.
Would you like to check for me that what is behind me and is up there is your alternate motion?
Yep, that's the one, Mr Mayor.
You're happy with the alternate motion?
Yes, Mr Mayor.
Members of the gallery, an alternate motion to the one listed in the agenda has been moved, so the motion behind me is different than what's in the agenda. Okay, we've got councillor Harriman's mover. Do I have a seconder?
Give me a second, Mr Mayor.
Do I have any opposition? Councillor... Oh, okay, so you're half and half, okay. Councillor Law is opposition. Councillor McFarlane has splinters, all right. Councillor Harriman.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just to run through why we're putting this alternate up, which is to refuse to grant a permit, it's my belief that the proposal does not meet the strategies and objectives contained within clause 16.01 2s, Location of Residential Development, and clause 16.01 4s, Housing Affordability of the Latrobe Planning Scheme, as the location of the site does not offer good access to jobs, services or public transport. Point two, the proposal does not comply with the proposal and decision guidelines of clause 32.08, General Residential Zone of the Latrobe Planning Scheme, including the issue of locating a diversity of housing types and locations offering good access, again, to services and transport. Point three, the proposal does not comply with the decision guidelines of clause 1665.01 of the decision guidelines of the Latrobe Planning Scheme, including matters set out in section 60 of the Act in relation to the associated social effects or the purpose of clause 3208, General Residential Zone, which is the area of the Latrobe Planning Scheme. In short, Mr Mayor, this is in the wrong place. We've seen this before, where we've had similar types of buildings and proposals across our city go in wrong areas where there's no access to transport, where there's no access to services and where there is no access to jobs or study. And we've seen those areas deteriorate greatly. The reason I am against it going in Kevin Court is very simply that it is the wrong location. Do we need these sorts of services? Yes, we do, but they need to be located in the right location, providing the right access for the type of clientele that are coming in, and they need to have the services available for those clientele as well. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Harriman. Councillor Howe?
I reserve this, Mr Mayor.
You're reserving? Move on to speaker against, which in this case is councillor Law.
Thank you again, Mr Mayor. Just clearly, I think the applicant has applied under our planning scheme to have this type of housing development done. The issue I face is that he's had meetings with our planners and has had the indication that all is okay and that he can proceed, and then to find the goalposts moved at the event, I find that a little bit difficult to comprehend, and I feel for that person from that point of view. I completely agree with my fellow councillor Harriman on the location to a degree, but the fact is that this person was given the right to commence this type of arrangement, and I do feel a little bit obligated that we have made, from a council point of view, to abide by our original planning decision, our planning department's decision to actually say it's okay, and I find that the goalposts now have been changed a little bit difficult to handle. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Law. Councillor McFarlane, you did indicate that you wish to speak.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I have a bit of a dilemma in this one, in that I support the objections that were received, and I support that we are all entitled to live in our residential areas in a safe manner. However, I do look at the application and looking at the conditions of the permit, I think a lot's got to do with the management plan. And it's like anything, if something's managed properly, then it can work, and if it's not managed properly, then it doesn't work. And I think we're all familiar with a couple of issues that we've had in our municipality in relation to rooming houses. I'm certainly aware of a couple in Moorwall that don't give us any grief, and I'm assuming that that's because of the management plan. So I really, I'm sitting on either side of the fence, Mr Mayor, but, you know, I've got a genuine concern as to, do we stop something because we assume that the management plan won't work, or do we give it a go? And I suppose the other factor that sits at the back of my mind, that if the 300 square metre building could be accommodated, then we wouldn't be even having this discussion. And therefore, when you look at something like this that incorporates verandas, take the verandas off, we get back to that area, which wouldn't allow us to even discuss it. So, I mean, I think there's certainly an issue here, and again, I'm a little bit unsure, and I'll lay it until death knocks till I've determined which way I'm going to go. But I have certainly sympathy for the objectors, but I'm also acknowledging that the recommendation to issue, as long as it's managed properly, could work. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McFarlane. Does any other councillor wish to speak? Councillor Clancy.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I much like councillor McFarlane, I find it a very, very difficult decision to make. As councillor Law has said, the goalposts have moved, so the applicant has done everything correct. Everything that you could have possibly done, you have done, and when you did it, that's where the goalposts were. But now that they've moved, we're looking at the Latrobe Planning Scheme, and it's a difference. So councillor Harriman is correct. It actually doesn't fit within our planning scheme as it's written at the moment, and it makes it a very, very, very difficult decision for councillors to make, but that's why we're elected to make these decisions. And I thank the objectors for the letters that they've put in and for their speakers tonight, and I thank the applicant for coming along as well and telling his side of the story as well, because it puts everything on the table and allows us to make the correct decisions, which is what we're going to do now. So thank you very much for doing that. That's the way democracy works, and it's certainly going to work very well tonight.
Thank you, councillor Clancy. Does any other councillor wish to speak? Councillor Gibson? Question, councillor...
Question, please, Mr Mayor. If this was voted down or approved... No, sorry, I'll start again. All right. If this was voted up as the alternate motion, now, if the applicant went and took the verandas off, could they then put another application in and it'd be approved straight away? So then, if this, if the refusal went up, all they would have to do is go and take the verandas off, and then it'd be done deal. Thank you.
As your question, councillor Gibson? Any other councillor wish to speak? Councillor O'Callaghan.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think in considering this matter, we need to apply the principles not only of the planning scheme and its application, we need to also consider the demonstrated capacity, and I think some of my colleagues have spoken, to both the good and bad in the mix, some of same scale, others of larger scale, oversighted by much larger entities with capacity for delegated authority of oversight that I think we would be able to say has been less than successful and has challenged not only nearby residents, but also those residents within the facilities themselves. It would not be any surprise to my colleagues to know that, from my perspective and given a great deal of work that I've done in community over the years, that ensuring availability of appropriate and accessible housing is something I see as a priority. But I also think for it to be successful, it needs to be proximate to service facility and transport. It also needs to be available in an area where it is well supported, recognised as being appropriate and consistent with amenity of the adjoining neighbourhood. I think what we see in relation to this unfortunately at the moment is an environment where the oversight authorities and those with delegated rights to ensure compliance, including council, is somewhat restricted in its capacity to ensure that that is policed and operated in a successful way. So I always consider these in light of the actual practical application of the rule of law and what that will mean for the nearby residents and the residents of the facility in the event that a problem should arise, or the need to intervene for one reason or another may come about. I'm not necessarily satisfied at this point in time that those requirements and that delegated authority would be exercised in a way that would meet my level of satisfaction. My colleagues will apply their thoughts to it as well, but in relation to this, I think we need to consider the broader community benefit and the best outcome in relation to this matter so that it is successful for all parties. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor O'Callaghan. Is there any other councillor wish to speak? And my notes indicate councillor Gibson, that's you. You're the only one who hasn't spoken.
I'll just...
Yeah, but you don't wish to speak? Okay, you're reserved, councillor Howe.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just, I think everything's been said, I'll just touch on a couple of things, though. I do think we need this sort of accommodation in Latrobe City and in Trelgan. When I went up there on Saturday afternoon, I sat at the front and had a good look at it. It's just not in the right location, and as much as we need accommodation, it's a mistake to endorse it if it's in the wrong position. Twelve people living in a house in a court or on the corner of a court, as one of the speakers said, could possibly have 10 or 12 cars at the front. Public transport is not nearby, there's no shops nearby. It's just, unfortunately, I think it's in the wrong place. Live, Work, Latrobe, even though it doesn't specifically say rooming houses, the idea of that is that you have your concentration of your population close by your services, by your train station, buses and shops, and as you move out from your city centre, your population becomes more sparse. So as much as I'd love to, I just, I can't support this. I can support this motion, I can't support the rooming house.
Thanks, councillor Howe. Councillor Harriman, closing.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, I think it's important to realise that with this application, not only were there 24 objections, but there's also a petition with 43 signatures on it from local residents objecting to this. As councillor Howe has alluded, we do need this type of accommodation, but it has to be in the right place. If we put it in the wrong location, which I believe this court is...
wrong location, which I believe this court is, then we're doing a disservice to those people that will actually be renting in that accommodation. We've seen with numerous other boarding houses that have been put in the wrong locations, away from transport and away from services, the type of issues that our council officers have faced. And we have situations where we have council officers going in only with police support. That is not what we need. I'm not saying this had occurred with this application, but it has in the past when we've put them in the wrong place. Where they've worked well is when we've put them in the right place, close by public transport, close by shops, close by services. That's when it works. Unfortunately, from my point of view, this is in the wrong location. And as for the location, I went and had a look on the weekend, and as the resident said, there is an unregistered car sitting there already. And that just rings alarm bells in my head. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Time has arrived councillors, we've had speakers, so we are now voting on the alternate motion. That is the motion behind me on the screen. Those in favour of the alternate motion? Councillor McFarlane, no. Councillor Gibson? Councillor McFarlane, you are in favour. Councillor Gibson, not in favour. Councillor Law, not in favour. Councillor Howe, in favour. Councillor Harriman, in favour. Councillor O'Callaghan, in favour. Councillor Clancy, in favour. And myself. Those against is councillor Gibson and councillor Howe. Councillor Law, sorry Brad. Yeah, yeah, but... Twins, they look so alike, yes. Councillors, the alternate motion is carried. Thank you. Moving on to 14.4, evict those people. I'm moving on to 14.4, infrastructure barriers to Latrobe City growth and investment. There is a recommendation on page 238, but the officers have provided an alternative. Mr CEO, would you explain the alternate motion to us please?
Just suggesting that to tidy up the wording, just in relation to the specific sorry, the councillor's second, primarily point one, a debate of the particular documents that were seconded from the government.
Thank you, Mr CEO. In effect, whilst it is an alternate motion, it is the officer's recommendation. Do I have a mover? Councillor Harriman?
Happy to move, Mr Mayor.
Councillor McFarlane to second. Do I have any opposition councillors? No opposition. Councillor Harriman, would you like to speak? Okay. Councillor McFarlane? Any other councillor wish to speak? No. Councillor Harriman, would you wish to close? No speakers, no opposition councillors, that is listed as carried unanimously. 14.5, submission to the consultation process associated with the draft Mineral Resources Sustainable Development Mineral Industries Regulations 2019, commences page 249 of the agenda. Do I have a mover? Councillor McFarlane? Seconder. Your brother is seconding. Good. Councillor Law? Okay, do I have any opposition councillors? No opposition. Would you like to speak councillor McFarlane? Councillor Law, would you like to speak? Any councillor wish to speak? On that basis, no opposition, no councillor speaking, will list that one as carried unanimously. Move across to 14.6, international engagement and investment strategy. The recommendation commences page 273 of the agenda. Do I have a mover? Councillor Harriman?
I'm going to move, Mr Mayor.
Someone to second, councillor Gibson to second. Do I have any opposition? No opposition councillors? Councillor Harriman, do you wish to speak?
I think I'd best on behalf of councillor White, Mr Mayor, who's chair of this committee. I think it would be remiss of me and would cause me great pain if I didn't. Mr Mayor, what this represents is a change of strategy for the international engagement investment strategy for community consultation. The International Relations Committee is changing how it looks. In the past, we've been a business and cultural, or started off culturally and moved to more a business interest area for the International Relations Committee. What this does is actually endorses that change to be more business focused. For the last probably four to five years, the committee has been moving more to an economic basis, looking for jobs, looking for companies that we can work with in Latrobe City, that we can bring to Latrobe City and do business with and create jobs and employment in this region. The International Relations Committee has been very, very strong on pushing that business agenda. What this does is sets out a strategy that we can take to the community to get their consultation, that's been put forward by the International Relations Committee and endorsed by this council, so that the people can actually have their say and see what we're actually trying to achieve with this committee. This is a subcommittee of council. I'm pleased to say it has originally had three councillors on it, but four deemed that they wish to serve on this council, and the committee was actually changed to accommodate that. It has on its committee a number of representatives from business across Latrobe City, as well as a couple of individuals with great contacts through Asia and through Europe, and has been a very, very positive committee, very strong on its goals of what it wants to achieve, and has been very supportive when we've had international delegations come here, that they've given up their time to come and actually speak to those delegations and be very supportive of what council is doing, to the extent that we've had some businesses in the area that have got a delegation without council being aware of it, and those members have actually informed council that a business delegation is coming, and we've been able to support that. So I ask my councillors to support the proposed resolution. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Harriman. Councillor Gibson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Following on from what my fellow councillor said, this is a change in direction. In the past, we've been levelled quite harshly, but fairly so. I would suggest that it's a junket. No longer are we looking at any... Sorry. No longer are we doing that. We're looking for, to get the best outcome for our community. And it's all about business and jobs. That's why this committee has changed focus very much. And I would ask my fellow councillors to support it and support the way we're going.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Is there any, oh, we didn't have any opposition. Anybody else wish to speak? No other speakers on that basis. Councillor Harriman, would you like to close?
Something. If I could, Mr Mayor, the key highlights of the new strategy include a realignment of the terms of reference to the committee to reflect council's intentions, committee change of name to International Engagement and Investment Committee to better reflect future activities, realignment of our sister cities' relationships, introduction of new types of relationships, greater clarity for the role of inbound delegations, greater clarity for focus of trade and investment, greater inclusivity in roles for committee members, and better responding, better reporting mechanisms to council. Mr Mayor, what this is about is bringing jobs to the region. We've seen how a change in our council's attitude to our international investment and engagement has had an effect already. We had council was the only Victorian council invited to a recent meeting in Japan with 300 businesses that had several billion dollars to invest. And the only council in Victoria that was invited to attend and speak at that conference in Japan was Latrobe City Council. I think that's where council is heading, and as councillor Gibson said, that is now the focus of what we're about. It's about getting jobs and more jobs and more industry and more diversity into Latrobe City. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Harriman. Having had speakers, we must put it to the vote. Those in favour? Councillor McFarlane, councillor Gibson, councillor Law, councillor Howe, councillor Harriman, councillor O'Callaghan, councillor Clancy and myself, carried unanimously. Move on to item 17.1, page 302 of the agenda, review of the provision of resources and support to councillors policy. Do I have a mover? Councillor Gibson, you're moving. Thank you. Do I have somebody to second the motion? Second, councillor McFarlane. Do I have any opposition councillors? No opposition. Councillor Gibson, do you wish to speak? Okay, decline. Councillor McFarlane, decline. Oh, councillors, we have no opposition and no speakers, so that one has to be carried unanimously. Move on to 17.2, service provision prioritisation. Before we move on to that one councillors, just by weight, we're about halfway through the agenda. Would you like a five minute break? It's all right. Five items. You reckon five minutes? Excellent. All right, my offer has been declined. 17.2, service review prioritisation for the 2019, 2020 and future years. Report 335, for mover? Councillor Harriman? Seconded, councillor McFarlane. Any opposition councillors? No opposition. Councillor Harriman, would you like to speak? Okay. Councillor McFarlane? All right, we have no opposition and no speakers, so again, that one is carried unanimously. I think councillor Clancy might be right, all over in five minutes. 17.3, council plan 2017 to 21, the annual review of that council plan, page 358 on the agenda. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Clancy, do I have somebody to second? Councillor Howe? Take your full three, just out of spite. Do we have any opposition councillors? There is no opposition. Councillor Clancy, the floor is yours.
Just for the sake of explanation, the council plan was adopted in June 2017. That's the current council plan for 17 to 21. And we do an annual review every year to make sure that we are meeting our benchmarks of our plan. And this report is that review. And the resolution just says that we're, having reviewed the council plan in accordance with section 125 of the local government act, it resolves not to make any adjustments to the current financial year for our current plan.
Thank you councillor Clancy. Councillor Howe? Decline. Is any other councillor wish to speak? No other councillor wishing to speak on that basis. Councillor Clancy, would you like to close? We have had a speaker councillors, even though we have no opposition, so we have to vote on it. Those in favour? Councillor McFarlane, yeah. Councillor Gibson, councillor Law, councillor Howe, councillor Harriman, councillor O'Callaghan, councillor Clancy and myself, carried unanimously. Moving on to item 17.4, contract variations and contracts awarded by the chief executive officer, a report for the period 1st of January 19 to 31st of March 19. Do I have a mover councillors? Councillor McFarlane, somebody to second the motion? Councillor Howe? Any opposition councillors? No opposition. Councillor McFarlane? Don't wish to speak. Councillor Howe? Okay, no opposition, no speakers. Again, carried unanimously. Go on to item 17.5 councillors, electronic surveillance approvals, commences on page 383 of the agenda.
So moved, Mr Mayor.
I'm sorry, I didn't notice you there councillor O'Callaghan. Don't move. Okay, a seconder. Seconder councillor, what's his name again? Yeah, thank you. Any opposition? No opposition. Councillor O'Callaghan? Have to make the offer to councillor Law? You were threatened, okay. No opposition, no speakers, councillors carried unanimously. Item 17.6, on page 389 of the agenda, 2019-20 community grants programme. Do I have a mover? Councillor Gibson, seconding. Councillor Howe. Do I have any opposition councillors? No opposition. Councillor Gibson, do you wish to speak?
I think there's a law against that actually.
Just quickly, sorry. Look, I'm really happy to move this motion. The amount of... We put in a minimal amount for the actual different projects, but what we get out of it and what the community do with that money far exceeds what we put in. And it is actually encouraging the community groups to be proactive with their actual facilities, and it's a great outcome. So I'm more than happy to move this. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillor Howe?
This program provides support to our community members and groups under the three streams, minor capital works, community development and community events. It's going to run very similar to it has for last year. What it does is give our community an opportunity to receive financial assistance when they're doing things such as improving facilities, running events and doing community projects. So very happy to second this and support the motion.
Thank you councillor Howe. Any other councillor wish to speak? Councillor Clancy?
Just as councillor Howe has just mentioned about the way that this is running as it has run in previous years, there has been discussion with community groups and members of the community who do apply for grants, that there is a constant improvement that we can make. So while we endorse this resolution to run as we have previously run, we are always looking for ways to improve, and whether there be two rounds per year as opposed to one round per year into the future to ensure that the groups who might have something later in the year or at the first half of the year can apply at a different time. It's an option going forward. This year, it's run the same way as it has done in previous years, which is early June, and approval will come to council in October. There's an opportunity to look at a different way into the future. But at the moment, tried and tested, it works and we're not changing the way it's done in the past.
Thank you. Any other councillor wish to speak? If not, we've had speakers, so we'll put this, item 17.6 to the vote. Those in favour? Councillor McFarlane, councillor Gibson, councillor Law, councillor Howe, councillor Harriman, councillor O'Callaghan, councillor Clancy and myself, carried unanimously. Move on to item 17.7, largely procedural councillors, tabling of assembly of councillors' records. Do I have a mover? Councillor Gibson, thank you. Somebody to second? Councillor Howe. Any opposition councillors? No opposition. Councillor Gibson, wish to speak?
Procedure.
Thank you. Councillor Howe, I take it you don't either? Carried. Moving along to urgent business. Are there any urgent business items? Any biscuits left? On the basis that there are no urgent business items, at this point we, we take the motion at this point to move into closed? No, yes. A motion to move into closed session to consider contractual matters. Do I have a mover? Councillor Clancy, seconder. Councillor Gibson, do I have any opposition? On the basis of no opposition and no speakers, I declare that carried. This is, for members of the gallery, this is the end of the public session. You are now invited to join councillors for a cup of tea. That's the three of you who are left. And for our viewers on YouTube, thank you for watching. Thank you for joining us tonight. We'll now shut down. Thank you. Thank you.